All the people in the gallery as well. We're just waiting, I think, for some members' microphones and things to be sorted. Okay, can we make a start then in that case? Can I welcome members and the viewing public, which includes people in the gallery but also people who may be watching us on the webcast, for this special meeting of the City Council which has been convened for the purposes of considering a motion to confer the honorary freedom of the city on the right honourable Mr Richard Caven. A second item of business will be considered regarding the establishment of a twin-city relationship with Comenscaya. Now, have I got that right or very wrong? Did I say it very badly?
Hmuel Nidgkey.
Right. In that case, I'm going to go back and sue Google. My apologies. As a Welsh woman, I am so used to people mispronouncing words from my country. I get it. Right. I'm anticipating that the special meeting will be completed in about 45 minutes and we'll then have a short break to enable the webcasting system to be reset and to allow for members of the public to depart or to access the public gallery ready for the ordinary meeting, which will start at three o'clock or shortly afterwards. Please, can I ask the interim Director of Legal and Governance to announce the housekeeping arrangements?
Please could have your attention while I make a few housekeeping announcements. Can members of the public familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery? In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from the security attendants, who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. Can everybody please switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. For safety reasons, please may I request that recording equipment is not held over the balcony. Finally, although there are no longer any specific Covid safety measures to adhere to, individuals are very welcome to wear a face covering within the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Item two, apologies for absence. I have Mike Chaplin. I believe that's five pounds to the Lord Mayor's charity. Mike Chaplin, Ben Curran, Craig Gamble-Pew, Maza Ikbal, Marouf Rauf, Malachi Hayby, Penny Baker, Mick Rooney, Gail Smith, Gary Wetherall and Paul Wood. Are there any others? Have I missed anybody? Lord Mayor? And we also have apologies for part one of this meeting from Council Mark Jones. Thank you. Item three, are there any declarations of interest? Colin?
Question for clarification. There's an item on the agenda referring to registration of private landlords and as a private landlord, I just want to clarify whether I need to declare an interest in this.
I think that's the next meeting but I'll give that clarification to this one if you require. Yes, this has been raised with me. A landlord has a declarable, sorry, a disclosable pecuniary interest in relation to that property. There are items on the following agenda which relate to licensing of private landlords but there will be no decision made no decision made in relation to actual licensing. It is merely requesting that the matter be referred to a subcommittee, sorry, to a policy committee to consider whether they wish to take any further action on them. Therefore, there's no direct relationship with any disclosable pecuniary interest and no member who has such an interest needs to withdraw from the meeting.
Is that okay with everybody? Thank you. In which case, we'll now move to item four, honorary freedom of the city of Sheffield for the right honourable Mr Richard Caven. And as Lord Mayor, I will be proposing this motion. So with my classic words, I am standing up. So, Richard Caven. Harold Wilson said that Labour owes more to Methodism than Marxism, in which case, Richard was doubly blessed because his father, George Caven, was a staunch member of the Communist Party and his mum, Mary, was an equally staunch Methodist. So clearly, Richard gained from both traditions. He was born in 1943, left school in 1958 and started an apprenticeship at First Brown, where I believe he was with Roger Barton, another miscreant. He rose to become a shop steward and then works convenor and he was also involved in the Sheffield Trades Council. Richard was passionate about injustice. Thank you. Richard was passionate about injustice so he joined the anti-apartheid movement and he was actually the founder of the Sheffield Anti-Apartheid Group. He rose up to become National Treasurer of the Anti-Apartheid Movement for Great Britain and he is one of the few people who could call Nelson Mandela Madiba because he was a friend of his. That's how much Nelson Mandela admired Richard. He's had a European and Westminster parliamentary career. His work as Sports Minister on securing the Olympic Games for the UK was one of his great successes, especially in persuading South Africa to support the UK bid. But a few words with Madiba and I believe those certainly helped smooth the way. But apart from his amazing wife, Margaret, who has the patience of a saint, his passion has always been Sheffield. It goes through him like a stick of rock. So actually, it's Richard's second wind that we are honoring today because Richard didn't sit on his laurels when he retired. He looked at what still needed doing in Sheffield. The Advanced Manufacturing Park is one of his projects, working with universities and industry to innovate and develop new ways of manufacturing and we have a world-class facility there. But that wasn't enough for Richard. His biggest achievement so far again is the Olympic Legacy Park, the only one outside London, the only one outside any of the Olympic host cities in the world, in fact. Bringing together a strong public-private partnership, he has helped to create an unrivaled cluster of life science assets. And there's more to come. The next stage of the Olympic Legacy Park will ensure a real sporting, health, education and skills legacy for generations to come. I cannot think of a more worthy and deserving candidate than Richard Caven, despite the fact that he's a Sheffield United supporter and it was Sheffield United people who approached the council to ask whether he could be made a Freeman. Richard's dedication is clear to see from his life's work. When most people retire from Parliament, they live a quiet life. Richard retired and immediately started improving Sheffield and the lives of our citizens. And as I have said, thanks to him we have the Sheffield Olympic Legacy Park and also the Advanced Wellbeing Research Centre, which is making such a difference to people's lives now and for our future, reflecting perfectly his ministerial career and his passion for and love of Sheffield. Richard's heart and soul goes into everything he does, always putting this city first. And it's my absolute privilege to name him an honorary Freeman and we will look forward to celebrating his achievements and this honour during an official ceremony in the New Year. So may I move that under and by virtue of the provisions of section 249, brackets, five, brackets, of the Local Government Act 1972, the honorary freedom of the city of Sheffield be conferred by the council on the right honourable Mr Richard Caven in recognition of his contribution to the advancement of sport in Sheffield nationwide and internationally and in doing so rendering eminent services to the city. I move. And I understand that councillor Peter Price is going to second this motion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Honoured and delighted actually to second this nomination, that Richard Caven become honorary member of the city. I wish you'd left me something to say actually but I I first knew Richard when he was simple shop steward down at First Brown's and I was branch secretary of the union up at the university. We used to meet regularly at trades council meetings and have our debates and arguments then. He was both, well, he was very active in the anti-apartheid movement of course and at national level and the Free Nelson Mandela campaign. Indeed, as you say, he became quite a friend of Nelson Mandela and it was quite instrumental in acquiring the African vote when it became to get the Olympic Games to Britain. And his contact with Nelson had helped him to get the good word out because we weren't very popular amongst the African nations, it probably gathered at the time and I think it was Nelson's speaking up the British bid that got us that thing and that was completely down to Richard Caven's contacts. I also knew his dad of course, who was a big member of the ECU, communist and he was also, by the way, awarded the Freedom of the City and I was there when he was awarded for his contribution to the trade union movement. So it was the first time ever we've had a father and son getting the freedom of Sheffield. I think it ought to bear in mind. He also became a UMP and introduced the Sheffield dialect, as I understand it, to the interpreters. Nobody could understand him when he got into his Sheffield rumble, when he was ranting and he took a special teaching lesson for the interpreters who were in the EEC at the time. However, his real heart, of course, was in Sheffield and back here. He had a small time as Regional Minister but when he became Sports Minister, I think he came into his element. Sheffield at the time had acquired the World Student Games and was decided to use sport as its regeneration drive and catalyst and he became very active in that. But I personally believe he's the greatest sports minister this country's had. He served for a long time, normally the in-and-out sports ministers, a couple of years at the most. It was in six years and he transformed the organisation. He devolved it down to the regions. The regions became very powerful. Funds were devolved down to the region. I had the honour of being Chair of Sporting in Yorkshire for six years and I saw the money that was coming to our region and to our city. It's no chance really that the English Institute of Sport arrived in Sheffield and things like that. And we owe a great debt to Richard for what he did for this city and I hope people will recognise that fact. The other thing you got involved with, of course, went to the heart of the city. People may forget this but it was very controversial at the time and will look like that not getting it through the council because it would have cost the city. Richard got onto the telephone to Eddie Healy, who was a big owner of Meadow Hall and he would underwrite any loss that that was going to make on those retail outlets and that helped to get it through the City Council. Richard's contacts with the public and private sector is quite unique and he has friends across all parties and that is seen as his impact. Once he retired from Parliament, his work he did in the Advanced Manufacturing Park, it brought in the public and private sector, Rolls-Royce, Boeing, aerospace technology, McLaren, all came through his influence and his contacts and then, of course, concentrated on the Olympic Legacy Park. I fell out with him on the Don Valley Stadium together where he supported his demolition and reinvestment. Anyway, that's by the way, looking back, it was a proper decision because what he's achieved down there is amazing and quite unique in this country. Brought together the private sector, the universities, the hospitals and the council in developing down there. A new community stadium with Sheffield Eagles on there, Sheffield United women's football teams on there and the schools on there. University Technology College UTC doing sports, science, computing, health. Sheffield Alm University, got a big block down there and children's hospitals, all bringing together sport, culture and fitness and health. And I think this is quite unique in this country. A brand-new basketball centre is being built down there, three courts, plus one for spectators for the basketball, professional basketball team. It really is quite unique and I think all that is due to Richard's initiative, energy, enthusiasm, that what brings in all different groups, not just political parties but the private sector, the Chamber of Commerce and indeed unfortunately Sheffield United. And I can't think of another politician in this city that's got a record that matches Richard's ability to bring together all community groups, whatever your political persuasion. And I'm honoured to be able to second this motion, Lord Mayor, and I think I'm greatly to gratitude actually and so I'm quite happy and pleased and delighted to second your motion, Chair. Lord Mayor.
I'm going to call on the Deputy Lord Mayor next.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor and thank you councillor Price for the history lesson as well. I hadn't realised his father and son as freemen of the city and it's a great honour. We on our side are going to support this, not primarily for Richard's work as a politician, elected politician actually, but more for his work post-elected politician and what he's done for Sheffield. I don't want to disclose a secret but the Advanced Manufacturing Park is actually in Rotherham but we don't really let that cut out the bag. But Don Valley Stadium as well, in that area around that, in the incubator around there. I must admit, I was quite sceptical when Richard came forth with the plans and actually said to him, it looks like it's been run up on the back of a fag packet, some of these calculations. But to be fair, and I always try and be fair, it has been delivered and it is there and it is a big asset, not just to this city but to the country and to the way it's researched and developed and it's something to be credited by. I've come across Richard many times, actually starting back when, and this is a bit poignant, when we were putting together the bid for the World Cup in England and Sheffield was a big part of that. It was when we were in power and we were going down to Wembley and things with the groups and working on that with him as well. But I've seen many events but one of the things that sticks in my mind is the Sheffield Half Marathon goes past our house so we stand there and applaud Richard and jog along with him for only a couple of hundred yards as he goes past, he's still there. As a former sports minister, actually actively taking part well into his, dare I say, 70s and things and still running. So on behalf of our group, we are supporting this, great honour and it is something that should not be taken lightly as freeman of the city and it's for his work, recognising his political work but actually his post-political work on behalf of all the citizens of Sheffield that we are happy to third this motion. Okay, thank you.
I'm now going to call upon Douglas Johnson to speak. I'd like him to be heard courteously.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't know if you recall what I'm going to say or something. I was going to say first of all, thank you for the explanations, the autobiographies of Richard Caven, which are actually very interesting and certainly worth hearing. And the fascination with the name Caven, of course, comes somewhere. If you're in your Caven's corner. And Peter mentioned that it's the only father-and-son duo to be proposed for Freedom of the City and of course, Caven's corner was where his father, George Caven, led the workers coming from the steel factories, you know, where the ones from Attic Cliff were joining up the ones coming from the north of the city and would meet there before March into town. And yes, George Caven was actually granted Freedom of the City in 1981 so of course, when even Peter was younger than he is now, yes, was there. And of course, that's actually a really important part of our history. Important to point out, of course, George Caven was never a member of the Labour Party. He was a staunch communist for all of his working life and fully backed by, a really big figure in the history of the city's workers there. But reflecting on the Freedom of the City, it is the highest award that we can offer as a council and only last week it was set out in a paper that members of the council here discussed that Freedom of the City should only be used for the most exceptional contributions usually of international historical importance. And the examples given were Nelson Mandela, who's already been mentioned, Jess Ennis, Helen Sharman, the first woman in space, you know, so actually going beyond international then, and the Yorkshire Regiment as a body. And despite these names, if you look back at the list of Freedom of the City, it's recognised, and we all recognise it, there's a lack of diversity in those honoured, not just in the sort of father-and-son arrangement, but a lack of diversity. And we agreed to devise a new process for all sorts of city awards and how this council could recognise people who have done things for the good of the city and in the city with a new system of public nominations. So our slight awkwardness here, using Kerry's phrase, now my slight awkwardness here is that we've now have a non-public nomination that's come before us today. In a way, we have had some fine speeches on this but of course, all the briefing given is it's for the Advanced in Sporting in Sheffield. And I don't mean to, you know, trivialise in any way but it's come before us without going through with this process, which everyone's now agreed that we need to revitalise and make sure it's modern and fitting and reflects the present and future of the city rather than the past. So it's not all about history, which is unusual for me. So Richard has certainly done a lot of useful work for his role as Chair of the Olympic Legacy Park after his retirement as an MP. But of course, actually, most people know him as an MP. He was originally selected for what was, what was that, you know, a safe labour seat at that time. He rose to become a junior minister in the Labour government when we had that for a few years and he developed lots of contacts in the sports world. He's been involved in the nuclear industry and there's the reference to the Advanced Manufacturing Park there. Support that and of course, that will be of relevance to manufacturing firms in the nuclear industry in Sheffield. The difficulty is this doesn't quite make it to the level of eminence that seems to envisaged by this, you know, this very high award of the Freedom of the City. So what I would propose, and if we talked about this earlier on, then propose this, we propose that we defer this until we have this new revised honour system in place with the criteria that has all been agreed need to be revised. And so that is to include an independent civic awards panel. So that's the way I'd approach it. I think it's perhaps, given that we have made this formal decision only last week, it seems a bit premature to just turn a back on that straight away. So with all due respect to Richard and we certainly appreciate all the long service that he's put in, that is the situation that we're in. So that's why I propose it's a way forward. Thank you, Lord Mayor, for taking that.
Does anybody else wish to speak? No? Oh, Anne, sorry? Did you wish to speak?
I do. I just find that shameful that you've made that kind of statement after hearing what both councillor Price and the Lord Mayor have said about councillor Caven. And I'm sat here, actually quite cross with you as a party. We've been working on these honours awards for over a year now. Your representative on the board was Kaltum Elmi. She hasn't passed on that information to you. That's not our problem. And actually, it was the Lord Mayor who specified that Richard was nominated by Sheffield United. And that did come to us and we did ask you. I came myself and spoke to you about it. And as far as I was concerned, you said to me, Angela, that you didn't have a problem with it and you were going to take it to the group. So I'm sorry. I find it absolutely disgraceful the way that you've just behaved and I'm very saddened on behalf of Richard but also on behalf of this city. Richard is well-liked by everybody and I'm ashamed. I'm absolutely ashamed today to be in this council chamber with people like you.
I believe the Lord Mayor is allowed to sum up. And I'm on my feet again. I would just like to reiterate why Richard has been proposed. I would disagree with Douglas that he does not have an international reputation. He certainly is known internationally for his work around sports administration and certainly in South Africa, he is known particularly well because of all the work he put into the anti-apartheid movement. Certainly at the same time when we know that a prime minister was treating the ANC as terrorists. But Richard was there from the start fighting for the abolition of apartheid. And that international reputation, as both myself and councillor Price have said, was instrumental in us then being able to Britain getting the Olympic Games because he had the relationship with Nelson Mandela, who had the relationship with many of the other African countries. Now, I understand what Douglas is saying about there is a new way going forward. This is going to be the last freedom giving under the old system and I recognise that from now on it will be the new one. But I would ask you to support this because Richard is definitely a man of Sheffield, a man who left school at First Brown. He wasn't a university graduate, he was somebody who came through the shop floor and became such an eminent and well-respected man. And for that, I think we should be giving him the Freedom of the City. Thank you, everybody. And we have no more speakers, sorry, I wasn't sure if the lead was, you can't now because I've spoken, those are the rules, okay. In that case, I'm now going to move to the vote on the motion. Is the motion agreed? I will take silence as the affirmation of the meeting. If any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. Thank you. Members, sorry, thanks, hands down. Hands down, I've noted that, so we will go to a vote. And the vote will be conducted using the electronic voting system. Okay. What we will do actually, hang on, hang on, won't... Can we, yeah, what I'm actually going to ask is to have a show of hands. We've all got hands. It's a song, isn't it? Right. Okay, those in favour of the motion to give the Freedom of the City to Richard Kayborn and those against? And are there any abstentions? Thank you. In which case that is clearly carried and the City of Sheffield will be bestowing the Freedom of the City on Richard Kayborn. Thank you all very much. We are now moving on to item five, which is the establishment of a twin-city relationship with the city in Ukraine, whose name I pronounce so badly, I'm not going to try again. There's a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item and we're going to receive an address from the mayor and deputy mayor of Kamensky, presenting a brief overview of their city, their city's current situation in respect of the current conflict in their country and their desire to establish twin-city relations with Sheffield. It's expected that the address will take between 10 and 15 minutes. The leader of the council will respond and I will provide a short opportunity for other members of the council to speak. The council will then be asked to authorise me to sign a memorandum of understanding with the city on behalf of the city council and citizens of Sheffield. Myself and the mayor of Kamelnelski will then sign the memorandum. The terms of the memorandum have been provided to the leaders of the political groups in advance of today's meeting. So I'm very pleased to welcome to the meeting Oleksandr Simchishin, mayor of Kamensky, and Mykola Vavrischuk, deputy mayor, and huge apologies now for my pronunciations. And they're accompanied by Tanya Klimenko, who is going to be helping with the translation. So may I invite Oleksandr to speak, please?
Шановні парині лорд майр, шановні понови депутати, шановні земляки!
The right worshipful, the Lord Mayor of Sheffield, shone at Mayor Richards. Esteemed... Sorry?
You pronounce my name so well.
I practised. Esteemed elected representatives, dear Ukrainian guests and other members of public.
Надзвичайно вдячний вам за можливість сьогодні бути разом з вами, донести свої думки про ситуацію, яка відбувається в Україні, а також свої думки стосовно нашої подальшої співпраці між Хмельницьким і Шефілдом.
I am very grateful for this opportunity to address you today, to tell from the bottom of my heart what I think about the situation in Ukraine, but more importantly, to lay out the road for future and our plans for future cooperation with Sheffield.
На самому ріді я щиро хочу подякувати усім вам, усьому народу Великої Британії, за неймовірну підтримку і допомогу, яку ви надаєте сьогодні Україні і українцям.
I should first of all say that I am eternally grateful to the United Kingdom and every citizen of the United Kingdom for your unreserved support and for huge help you provided to my nation in these treacherous times.
Сьогодні вже 294 дні, як в Україні триває війна, війна за свободу, війна за демократію, війна за права людини і війна за наше українське майбутнє.
Today is a day 2094, since my country is at war. And it's a war for democracy, a war for human rights and a war for survival of my country.
Насправді, Росія напала на Україну ще в 2014 році і Україна за свою свободу воює вже майже дев'ять років. Ну але після 24 лютого наше життя змінилося докорінно і повністю.
As a matter of fact, this war began in 2014, so it's been almost nine years now of our fight. However, since the February 24th of 2022, the life of every Ukrainian has changed profoundly.
Насправді вся наша реальна реальність змінилася повністю. Зараз ми не маємо часу сперечатися, не маємо часу на будь-які дискусії, тому що ми зобов'язані захистити свободу, захистити демократію. Ми кожної хвилини, кожної секунди воюємо за майбутнє цивілізованого світу.
And the profound change meant what not only we had to mobilise ourselves, we had to leave aside all squirrels, our little disagreements, we had to unite, we had to walk as one, working for future of democracy in a whole of this world.
Мені було дуже приємно, що сьогодні ми стали свідками дуже поважної події, коли ви вручили звання почесного громадянину, достойному мешканцу Шефілда.
I'm quite pleased to be present at a time when, or at a meeting where elected representatives are bestowing a title, a honourable title, of one to one of your citizens.
Буквально місяць тому ми теж в своїй міській раді вручали звання почесного громадянина Хмельницького і вручили це звання 94-м нашим мешканцям. Наймолодшому було 18 років, найстаршому було 58 років.
Recently, we had a similar meeting in our city council where we've given the title to 94 distinguished individuals, the youngest of which was 18 years old and the eldest 58 years old.
Але, на жаль, це звання вони всі отримали посмертно, бо героїчно загинули у війні проти Росії. Кожного з них вбила Росія, розпочавши цю війну.
Unfortunately, none of them were there to receive the title because all of them died in a war with Russia.
Насправді війна в Україні надзвичайно важка, надзвичайно страшна і в результаті ми втрачаємо найкращих своїх людей.
The most terrible side of this war is what we are losing the best people.
Буквально цієї суботи, кілька днів тому, перед тим, як приїхати до вас, я повернувся з лінії фронту, де приїхав більше трьох тисяч кілометрів і бачив ті міста і села, які Росія зруйнувала повністю, де не залишилося жодної вцілілої будівлі, де вбили тисячі цивільних людей, женок, дітей, старших людей.
Just on Saturday, I came back from my latest, most recent trip to the frontline. I drove over 3,000 kilometres along the ruined villages and cities. In some places, not a single building survived; in others, I saw thousands of fresh graves.
Ну але українці не здаються і не здадуться ніколи. Українці прекрасно розуміють, що для них ця війна історична, що для них це війна священа і на сьогодні українці захищають і воюють не за територію.
However, rest assured, Ukrainians are not giving up. They are not yielding. It's a war which is bigger than Ukraine. They are not fighting for our territory.
Ми воюємо за свободу, ми воюємо за демократію, ми воюємо за права людини, ми воюємо за цивілізований світ і ми воюємо за життя.
We are fighting for freedom, for democracy, for human rights. We are fighting for the most basic right, right to be alive.
Тому ми обов'язково переможемо в цій війні.
And that's why we are going to win.
Я хочу щиро вам всім подякувати за те, що від сьогоднішнього дня у нас розпочнеться співпраця між Шефілдом і Хмельницьким.
I'd like to say a most sincere thank you for giving us a chance today to start this new cooperation, new partnership between Khmelnytsky and Sheffield.
Нам надзвичайно приємно, що це буде саме англійське місто, адже Велика Британія на сьогодні є одним з найнадійніших партнерів України і українського народу.
It's very important to us to have this twining agreement with the city in England because at the moment, United Kingdom is one of the biggest supporters of Ukraine.
І меморандум, який ми підпишемо сьогодні, це демонстрація для хмельничан, для всіх українців, демонстрація того, що незважаючи на жорстоку війну, незважаючи на терористичні атаки, які робить сьогодні Росія, в тому числі і по нашому місту, обстрілюючи його ракетами, 9 ракет прилетіло до нас за останній місяць, незважаючи ні на що, життя продовжується, українське майбутнє є і нам допомагає цивілізований світ.
The memorandum, if signed today, will signal to everyone in Khmelnytsky and beyond that there is hope, there is future, and despite the terroristic attacks, which just recently nine rockets exploded in Khmelnytsky, despite all this, there is a way forward and we have support from all civilised countries.
Сьогодні у нас так само надзвичайно складна ситуація, тому що кожен день Росія обстрілює ракетами нашу енергетику і намагається поставити нас на колі на тим, щоби залишити без світла, без тепла, без води.
The situation in Ukraine is quite difficult. Every day there are attacks which are targeting civilian infrastructure and the aim is to deprive Ukrainians from electricity, water, heating.
Ну але, насправді, це все нас робить тільки сильнішими і тільки більше мотивує нас боротися за нашу свободу, за нашу демократію, за наше право жити, як цивілізований світ.
But what those terrorist attacks achieve, they only achieve what they are getting more determined and they are only getting to appreciate even more the values of democracy, the values of civilised lives, the values of peaceful life.
Ще раз і ще раз щиро дякую вам за допомогу і за підтримку. Для нас буде велика честь мати дружні відносини з містом Шефілд. І на завершення хочу сказати, що наша перемога, перемога України, це буде перемога цивілізації, це буде перемога добра, це перемога демократії, перемога свободи. З вашою допомогою і підтримкою ми обов'язково переможемо. Слава Україні!
I would like to finish my speech by saying that if signed today, the memorandum will signal what you agree with us, you believe in us and you think the same as us, what victory of Ukraine will mean the victory for democracy, victory for civilised world and hope for everyone who shares these values. Glory to Ukraine!
Я на завершення хочу зробити подарунок для пані лорд майра.
After the official speech, one lord mayor would like to present a very special present to the rightful workers.
Це особливий прапор, цей прапор розписаний українськими воїнами, воїнами, які зараз в ці хвилини, в ці секунди захищають свободу, захищають весь цивілізований світ.
This flag is signed by armed forces members who are right now fighting in a front line. Every single signature on this flag is from someone who is fighting right now.
Головний напис на цьому прапорі - це "Thanks, Great Britain, for supporting Ukraine". Thank you. І ще маленький подаруночок, це кубок, да, напис про наші міста, про наше сьогодні підписання меморандуму: "Шефілд і Хмельницький, support Ukraine!"
And it's on stainless steel!
This is pretty amazing. I'm now going to ask our leader to respond to the speech.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, followed, I've followed some speeches in this chamber, but nothing of that magnitude. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Oskander, and certainly my caller, for the number of times calls we've had over teams. So to finally get you here is a real kind of feat and thank you for coming. So to finally get you here is a real kind of feat and thank you for coming. It's okay, I'm used to getting stopped, it's usually by the lord mayor, so well, carry on. I'd like to thank Nick Alton and the team for putting this together. It really is a lot of hard work gone in to getting yourselves to come to our proud city. I'd also like to thank you, Tanya, not only for today, but for all your help in our Eurovision bid when we went down to the...
You don't blame me.
I'll leave that to Martin shortly, but no, it was a real honour and a pleasure to go with the Ukrainian representatives. Before I start, Mr. Mayor, I understand you have an 85% approval rating in the city. I think it's only something we could ever dream of in our city. But we open our arms to the people of Ukraine. We open our arms to the residents of Klimenski. Sorry if I've got that wrong, but it's a bit of a twang. Just listening to you speak on behalf of your country, men and women, and also the residents. We was on a call with my caller when the energy suppliers was getting bombed out. I was sat in my conservatory to try and get your head around that kind of conversation. Everything that yourself and the city was facing at that time was truly surreal to me. On a number of trips around many of Europe and the battlefields to see the scars of yesteryear, but to live through it as you are going today, we can only begin to feel the pain that you must be feeling at this moment in time. So to have the opportunity as comrades to hold our arms out with this memorandum of understanding for our two great proud cities to discuss trade. And we are really, really proud of our maid in Sheffield and for yourselves, I know how proud you are in your maid in Klimenski. So to be able to sign with that your great city along with our city universities, so we're able to join through education and through dialogue. Also, the cultural experiences between the two cities can only, as you quite rightly say, send a signal that democracy will always win, no matter what disagreement, no matter what upset. Democracy has to win. To be able to get our two great cities to come together in that civic understanding between us. We are striving in Sheffield to be a fair and inclusive city. We were often said in this chamber, we will not yield from that. And in our solidarity and in the signing of the memorandum of understanding, which our lord mayor will sign with the mayor, I hope that not only in Sheffield, not only in Klimenski, not only in Ukraine, but across Europe, it shows that we will not put up with tyrants and that we will stand shoulder to shoulder. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I will now call upon councillor Shafak Mohammed to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and welcome to our city. The city of Sheffield, the city, UK's first city of sanctuary, a city that welcomes all, and we welcome you today. Prior to this meeting today, I happened to talk to a colleague of mine, who is, we are in contact with lots of friends in Ukraine, a member of your parliament, Kira Ruddyt, I think, if I pronounced the name right. And in passing, there was a message about what's the mayor like? Yourself, sir. And the message from Kira is, he's a good guy, but a bit strict. I kid you not, it's here, colleagues. I don't know if Kira's from your party or not, but that's the message I got on WhatsApp.
No, she's not from his party.
Well, there you go. I'm not from his party. But today we stand united because not only as a city, but as a country, but as a world, we are standing united behind freedom, a freedom for you, the country of Ukraine, to decide your own future. And for us today, it's the start of a friendship between people. You know, we have welcomed people from Ukraine right across your country, into our homes, into our communities. You can see the contribution you are making. And we tried so desperately, my colleague here, Martin Smith, to actually get Eurovision on your behalf, so we could celebrate Ukrainian culture within our city. We didn't get that, but rest assured, we'll continue to actually speak up on behalf of the people of Ukraine and celebrate the contribution that the Ukrainian community that have been here a few months, but also years, are making to our city. So I'm proud and I'm sure everyone else is here today to be supporting this start of a new relationship between our cities. And we will be right beside you ultimately when you win against the tyrant Putin. Thank you.
The next person to speak will be councillor Angela Argentia.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and welcome to Sheffield. Sheffield, as my colleague has mentioned, was the first city of sanctuary in the UK, in the world. It's a city that has, over many years, welcomed people from all over the world, including myself, as a migrant to this city, as an adoptive citizen of this city. I am very proud to represent the city in this forum. And we have had a Ukrainian community in the city for very many years, but also welcomed quite a large number of families to the city since the spring of this year, when the war first started in Ukraine. So we are hoping that people from Ukraine that have been settled in the city for a long time will continue to make their contributions. And also, people who are here, you know, just since this year, will either decide that they're happy enough to be here, stay with us, or go back to Ukraine if they so want to. I think these gestures, they are symbolic, but also practical from our point of view as a city, they're very important. The sisterhood, the twinning between two cities is an important signal to send to the world out there to say that we stand united and we're looking at the future with hope. Because whilst you were talking about fighting for, you know, fighting a war practically, fighting for survival, fighting for human rights, our hope is for peace. And when we get that peace, we can then look at the future with hope and we can build those relationships again and we can rebuild the country again. I just want to go back to the idea of what contribution migrants make to the city. And I hope that this will be the same in a rebuilt Klimenski, where people like me that come from a different country can one day stand as a politician and speak to someone from a different country. Because we are all united and we all want to live peacefully and in democracy. So hopefully, we can look forward to many years of collaboration between Sheffield and your city. And thank you for coming.
I'm just going to add something quickly because I met Alexander and Mikola earlier this morning at Bernard Road Recycling Depot. And I mentioned that coming from a Welsh rural background, something that has really intrigued and inspired me has been the Ukrainian farmers just running off with all those burnt-out tanks and recycling them in their farmyards and making something of them. And I've just really liked that because I just know that rural Welsh farmers would be very much up for doing the same sort of thing. To which Mikola said, yes, it's inspired us as well. And they have produced stamps, postcards and envelopes showing a farmer defeating a tank in just the way that has inspired so many of us when we've seen these pictures on our TV screens. So there was a competition for something which would represent the phrase, I've got it here. "Good evening, we're from Ukraine", and I think that those farmers there absolutely personify the Ukrainian spirit. And I'm very proud to be the owner of this, you can all come and see it later. Thank you. So can I ask councillors Fox and Mohammed to formally move and second a motion to authorize me to sign a memorandum of understanding with the city of Menzki? It's Shemenzki, isn't it? On behalf of the city council and the citizens of Sheffield. Councillor Fox.
Lord Mayor, honoured to propose.
Lord Mayor, honoured to second.
Motion agreed. I'll take silence as the affirmation of the meeting. Okay, can I have a show of hands of all those in favour, please? Absolutely unanimous, nenu com. So myself and Alexander will now sign the memorandum. There are four versions, two in each language, and we will retain one of each and Alexander will retain the other two. So can I ask Alexander, Mikola and Tanya to... Yeah, walk this way. Can you move my chair? I don't know what... Just push my chair right up in there. Okay, have you got a pen? Or do you need mine? Okay. I'm not sure if we're supposed to have a photo taken. Yeah. Okay. And it's amazing to see my name written in Cyrillic. Which way am I looking? Right, let's sign. Oops, I haven't left you much space there, have I?